The one I'm talking about was you. And it was like, you looked like you were playing the keyboard or something. It looked like that.
I saw it on the show.
You know what I'm talking?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I was gonna crop some Elgin glasses on your face. Send it to you.
You think Brad's ever gonna come back to work? I have my doubt. I do, too. Too bad, because he can use it just for something to do, but...
I guess.
Need to relax. He's wearing out his cortisone shots.
That's what I've heard. It's just, it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
Yeah.
We'll start with a pledge of allegiance, followed by...
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, you're gonna start off with citizen concerns, other than Yetski out there, right? No concerns? Just one? Just one. All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. I'll move the approval.
Second.
Motion by Radic, second by Hung. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass it. And anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items three through eight constitute a consent agenda, routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the minutes of the March 26, 2019 meeting. Number four, approval of claims. Number five, approval of a 2080 agreement between Woodbury County, Iowa and the Woodbury Soil and Water Conservation District for funding and management of a watershed inspection and maintenance program in Woodbury County, Iowa. Item six, from the county auditor, received the appointment of Arzella Hamm to the Danbury City Council. Item seven, from Human Resources. A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate hiring process. And C, approval of requests to deauthorize county positions. Item eight, from Board Administration. A, approval of lifting tax suspension for CS. B, approval of resolution for tax suspension for LC. And item nine, from Secondary Roads, consideration of utility permit for work in the county right-of-way. And...
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that. So, motion by DeWitt, second by Radig, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on anything on there? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. Moving on to item 10, and Mark isn't here, unfortunately. Is he? Oh. No.
Close enough. Give it to him.
All accepted on his behalf.
All right, well, that's the presentation of award certificates, Mark Nara, for the generous donation of 10 gallons to the Life Served Blood Center. Time off, well, he won some time off. There are four hours paid time off. Moving on to item 11, Secondary Roads. Mark Nara?
I'm...
Is he supposed to be here?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, do we want to take on Dave's items real quick, then? Okay, we'll skip, but we'll go on to 12 here. 12A, receive the zoning commission's recommendation from their 325-19 meeting and approve the final plat.
David Blizer, Community Economic Development Director. This agenda item is requesting the board to receive the zoning commission's recommendation to approve the final plat for the Stubbs addition, which is a minor subdivision in... Township, Dan?
Mowville.
The Mowville Township, thank you. This particular subdivision is a little unique. It's a one-lot subdivision that is, it's a, this lot is surrounded, basically engulfed in another subdivision. This couple is going to split their parcel and sell a lot, but because they're not a part of that original subdivision, it was the opinion of the surveyor to not submit a replat. So, one-lot subdivision.
I move approval of the zoning commission's recommendation.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor. So, that's the approval of the recommendation. And then, also, is that receiving it, then, or is that gonna be a second motion?
It's to receive the recommendation is the first motion.
So, that was the receiving, then, I'm guessing?
Yep.
All right, so, motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor. Any further discussion on receiving that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. And then...
I'll move to approve the subdivision plat and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
All right, so, motion by Hung, second by Potabom. So, is this just kinda confusing, or you have it kinda written to approve final plat in A, but we're actually doing it in B, correct?
That's to receive the recommendation from the zoning commission is the first motion, and the second one is for you to approve.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, we skipped you there.
Congratulations.
We got items 10 and 11 for you up here.
You guys are just waiting to the vision to be seven minutes into the meeting in this room. Thank you. Sorry I'm running late.
I had to apologize on your certificate here. I did get a paper cut. I mean, it is ironic, it's the blood donation one. I'm just kidding, the real one's behind it, but...
Thanks. Appreciate you, Steve.
Just wondering, is it there?
Yeah. Then it got me started doing that back in college and continued through now.
I was just worried you gave 10 gallons at one time.
We're trying to do the math there, so if the body holds 10 pints, and there's, what, eight pints in a gallon, so you've given eight times what your body holds.
Given eight Mark Naras.
Lot to give away. Some, no, we won't go there. Some would say that, maybe that's what explains what's been going around.
So, now, we'll go to item 11 here, consider resolution opposing Senate File 184.
Senate File 184 is a bill that's currently under consideration. It was moving fast-track through the Senate. What it proposes to do is to allow a certain class of trucks to run up to 130,000 pounds on all roads, including county roads, without obtaining a permit from the county with jurisdiction over it. Right now, it applies specifically to logging trucks, but one of the County Engineers Association's concerns with this is that it's kinda the camel's nose in the tent. If we start allowing the DOT to issue permits for us without checking with the county on logging trucks, what's next? Is it going to be construction loads or other heavy overloads that are going up and down our roads? Bridges are only analyzed up to an 80,000-pound load typically. We have been doing more analysis on some of the special trucks. Most of our bridges here in Woodbury County are analyzed for the 96,000-pound truck, but as you can see, that's quite a bit short of that 130,000-pound unit that's being proposed under this bill. What I'm requesting is that the board consider a resolution to request our legislators to reconsider their support of this bill and to vote against it when it appears before.
So, okay, go ahead.
Contacted any of our...
I, I've contacted Senator Carlin. I have not heard back from him. Senator Smith tried to vote this down and commit, and she continues to be against the bill. I think that's the perspective that a former county supervisor brings to that Senate position is they have a pretty good understanding of the issues that give us concern out here. I was pleased to see that she's, she had voted against it once before I even talked to her, so... I haven't sent anything out to House members yet. It would be my intention to send a copy of this, signed by all the board members, to those legislators who represent Woodbury County after the board hopefully approves a resolution.
And a little bit of danger maybe about us wanting no, one loaded truck as transferred to a bridge. I mean, is there any real enforcement happening, or is this pretty...
They have to be caught. If we had information, and we get this frequently during harvest, we have some posted bridges, and usually a neighbor will call in and they're saying, "Hey, my neighbor's running loaded corn trucks over that eight-ton bridge over here." Happens on Pocahontas Avenue just about every year. And we call the Iowa DOT enforcement staff, and if they have one of their officers available, they go over and try and intercept that hauler. And we've had some success with that.
What happens if it's after the act, sir? Teeth in it?
There's really no teeth in it. The witness complaint isn't enough. It has to be caught by the officer, is my understanding. Because part of what has to be done is that driver has to be apprehended, and then the truck has to be taken to a certified scale, or they use the scale, the portable scales the officers carry in their vehicles. So, it has to be one or the other. There has to be proof of what load that vehicle's actually carrying. And one of our frustrations with this is, since when is a truckload of logs not a divisible load? Put fewer logs on the truck. You know, in this case, we've got a class of haulers that are wanting to haul more than legal loads down the roads. To me, this is a fairly simple solution, but there is, we looked at who was registered on the bill, that's available on the legislator's website. There's a couple logging operations in eastern Iowa that got the kind ear of a legislator to get this under consideration. They hired a lobbyist to help push it through, and it's been the resistance from county engineers supported by this resolution that county boards have been passing that has slowed down consideration of this bill, and hopefully will ultimately feed it. One of the things we are looking at is, our legislative group, I'm on that committee, is starting to talk to our legislators about some compromises that can be done here. One would be not allow the DOT to issue those permits on our behalf without checking on our bridges or roads. You know, we wanna be sure if we've got a pavement out there that we feel needs to be embargoed, that we're keeping those heavy loads off of it during that embargo period. For instance, if they want to run these over 220th Street, that Sealco Road we worked on a couple of years ago, we wouldn't wanna see these going up and down that road in March. And without that ability to know these vehicles are coming through the permit process, we'd have no way of stopping them. We think it's important that, number one, DOT not be allowed to issue permits, and number two, that we resist the 130,000-pound load.
It says on there, "Without a permit from the county." If somebody were to contact you and say, "We're gonna, we wanna run a couple of trucks across your roads at 130,000," would we just take, give them a permit and charge them a fee?
We would check the road, the route that they wish to take. If there are any bridges on that road, we analyze the bridges to assure that they can carry that load. We do this as a matter of course. We have a lot of large cranes that run our county road D-12. One company in particular, we've analyzed almost every crane they have going over our bridges up there to assure that those bridges can safely cross our, to assure those cranes can safely cross our bridges without doing damage to them. We have special overloads from time to time. We've had houses moved. Some of those have been in the 90,000 to 100,000-pound range once they're loaded up on a truck. We go through and check all of those bridges in advance of that route. Usually, it takes us about one to two days. There's a cost of $300 to $400 with doing that analysis. We get their axle configuration. We send that to our bridge inspection consultant, and then they run that overload check for us.
Is that part of the permit fee, then?
We, that's separate from the permit fee.
I mean, we get that back during the permitting, then?
Yeah, after we get that back, we bill the hauler the cost of the analysis plus the permit fee. A single-trip permit's only $30. But again, that, the cost of that analysis would be put on top of that in the case of an issue where they want to run that overload across the bridge. We have routes that we have denied, and then we work to try to run vehicles around that. We also have routes that are approved for the 156,000-pound maximum overweight load. Port Neal Road and Port Neal Circle are two of the routes that we most frequently see those very heavy loads on. We have no bridges down there. We just have eight-inch pavements now, which are capable of carrying that load. So, again, this is, part of that permit process is, by contacting us, we know whether or not the route is safe and can legally, well, can, with a reasonable engineering standard, carry the type of heavy load they're putting over it.
That's all I have.
If they're overloaded?
If they're overloaded and they, we catch the truck at the bottom of the creek, then the individual who drove the overloaded truck, if that bridge is posted. Now, if, if they're running 130,000 pounds over an unposted bridge, it would be an argument as to who was responsible in this case. One of our concerns with this issue is, we would end up seeing a lot of bridges statewide posted just to keep this heavy load off. Now, that would have a tendency to impact our farmers. The 96,000-pound load that we have most of our bridges analyzed for is one that's legal. It's a triple-axle trailer, triple-axle semi, and then, you know, this thing go up the front. That's legal for hauling grain now. And for us to post bridges at 40,000, or 40 tons, 80,000 pounds, to avoid this 130,000-pound load, we'd also be restricting that 96,000-pound load that might be able to use our roads Bridges, just because they don't have a load posting, don't have unlimited capacity, that's not what that means. It's just that they exceed the capacity of legal load, which by code, for the most part, is defined at that 80,000. That 96,000, again, is a special tag in construction. I don't know if y'all heard Dennis's question, his was, "Who pays?" That's a complex issue when the bridge isn't posted.
Or if they're really...
Yes.
Which is the cost of the county?
About $800 a bridge is what it costs to get the four signs up. You need to have a sign in advance at the prior intersection ahead of the bridge, and then two signs of the bridge. And it's about $200 in installation for the sign post, even the time it takes the operator to put it up.
I'll move the resolution.
Motion by Potabom, second by Taylor. Any other discussion on the item? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero.
Well, we really appreciate the board's support with this. I'll get this in the scan and send by email tomorrow to our legislator, legislators from Woodbury County. And I think we're one of the later counties of getting on board with this. It came out last week, and I missed getting on the agenda, so...
They're not all doing the same exact word-for-word resolution, are they?
It's similar. We go through and we actually show what our, for instance, we have 300 bridges. The Lee County, who wrote the resolution, they had 218. So, we go through and we change all the issues that relate directly to Woodbury County before I brought this to you guys for consideration.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, Tyler Project Update.
There's the charm.
That's sorry.
Michelle Scap, Deputy Auditor. I wanted to be brief, so I just wanna go through all 6,000 lines that we converted and explain each one to you individually of our chart of accounts. Is that gonna be okay?
Explain all 6,000s, I guess?
Right.
Don't have anything else to do tonight?
What's more fun than talking about account numbers? So, first of all, one of the things you're probably concerned about is the budget and where we're at in the budget of the Tyler project. I do have a sheet up behind you, if you wanna take a look at that. This shows the different sections of the budget. We have the Tyler section for implementation, which was approved in June of last year. We've expended 40% of that budget, but we've got a lot to come, because now we're starting to have the visits onsite of the Tyler contractors being here and configuring all of the different factors of the project. The data extraction, we're 83% expended. We've done one extraction of data in late fall of last year. We've got two more extractions that are coming up. I have spoke with the individual who's extracting the data, and she said she should be within that $8,000 budget, so she's got a lot of work to do for $1,300. WCICC, we worked real hard with the outside contractor before we presented our proposal to figure out what cost we're gonna have up in IT with new servers and new infrastructure that's needed in the IT department. And you can see, we had budgeted about $180,000 just for that part of the project. We've expended about 32% of that. And I did speak with Doug. He's the lead in the IT department up there, and he said that he could pretty much predict that we're gonna be within the budget on that, so we shouldn't be going over. So, overall, we've expended about 22% of the budget. So, what have we done? Chart of accounts. Last December, Dennis and I started working with Tyler to reformat the chart of accounts. So, we're, we're doing an overhaul here that's of a pretty large magnitude, because we're basically changing every expenditure line and every revenue line that the county has. And the reason we're doing this is to meet the Iowa chart of account standards. So, our expenditure and revenue lines are all changing. We had 6,917 expenditure lines, and we're only converting 2,112 of them. What we decided to convert is everything from fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19, and the budget for fiscal year '20, because when we go live on the project, we're gonna be into July, so we'll be pulling in everything that we'll be able to use to forecast our budgets for fiscal year '21. So, we'll still be able to provide the reports that have fiscal year '18, '19, and '20 to date in July. Any expenditure lines that were not expended from or budgeted, we have eliminated from the conversion. We'll still be able to pull that information through Legacy View, but they're not gonna be in Tyler as converted accounts.
What will the practical effects for us be as board members? Is it, when we get to budgeting, will there be any lack of line items, or is this just for kind of a high-level overview of coding that has to be in line with what the state expects?
You should see cleaner budgets. You shouldn't see as many zero lines on the budget, because those will be eliminated if there's never been an expenditure and there's never been a budget out of those lines. So, you'll see cleaner budgets. You'll see a few of the line items' names have changed, and we're gonna build crosswalks to give all the departments that'll show them. And I'll show you kinda just a real quick look of what the expenditure lines are gonna look like. You're gonna see probably nicer-looking PDF-type documents when you see the budgets that you're looking at for review, but you're gonna have the same information. Our goal was to make sure that you have all of the information from all of the lines, even if it's something like the Sheriff's Gun Program that they no longer use. We're bringing that data in, because it's still a line that was expended from within the last two fiscal years. So, you're not gonna wanna see the whole budget when you're determining the new budgets.
So, we won't see the Apple 2G Plus kind of screen up here?
No. No. I'll have a couple little examples here for you, if I don't bore you too much before then. Dennis?
We're also gonna define each line item also, which you haven't had before. This line item equals this category expenditures or incomes. So, they'll know exactly where they need to go to the items. Instead, here, air contracts, agents' agreements, things like that. It's gonna be better defined and fine-tuned.
Well, this will also make it easier to share information with the public.
Yes. And we're gonna be implementing the Tyler Transparency, which is a public site that they'll be able to actually drill down on expenses as they happen to. So, that'll be a little bit down the road. But you can see the reductions, this percentage, I don't need to read this to you. But we configured the funds. We've added an office, which was never in the expenditure line before, and there are 32 offices or office or department, whichever you fall into. And those are in the chart of accounts, department divisions, and then we've added DOT codes, which were never in there before, which is really gonna benefit Mark, because he'll be able to do some of his DOT reporting more effectively by being able to pull straight from our finance program and upload to the DOT for some of the reports that he has to do. Any questions? So... Mouse doesn't work very good here. Karen, can you open that file and open number two?
Is it, 'cause it's going, like, through my head, or?
Okay, so, here, just for a quick glimpse, is our old expense line. We have a fund, department, division, activity, and element, object. Can't get the mouse to point, but the new expense line, as you can see, our fund is going to four digits. It used to be three. Offices added, as a 02 would be the auditor's office, 01 is the board of supervisors, and every office is gonna have their designated number. So, if that department wants to pull a report just for their office, Pat can run 02, and he can get everything from auditor recorder and elections all in one report. 9010 is equivalent to our old department, division. You're gonna see a lot of those numbers drop by one digit. Our current software wouldn't allow you to end division in zero, so we weren't able to conform to the chart of accounts on those numbers. So, now, we're actually going according to the chart of accounts. So, what used to be 911 is now 910. And then, the next three digits are the DOT number. You're gonna see zeros on every line, with the exception of the secondary roads, and we worked with Mark to make sure that his lines were correct for that. And then, our object numbers go into five digits, whereas our element object used to be four. So, that's just gonna give us a little bit more leeway that we can add numbers as we need them. Revenue lines, which I'm not sure how much you saw these, but our revenue line in the past was the same format as the expense line, with the exception, the activity started with a three, and an expense started with a four. In the new Tyler world, you're gonna see a whole different format for revenue. So, you'll be able to tell just by looking at the account number if it's a expense or a revenue, because of how it's formatted. So, again, the funds go to four digits. We've added a revenue type, which is zero through four, according to the chart of accounts, and that's based on the type of revenue that's being received. Again, the office is gonna be the same as the office within expenditures. Function is equivalent to the department, division, and source is a five-digit number as opposed to two, or as opposed to four that we currently have. So, last week, we had Tyler here, and we configured the general ledger and accounts payable. We brought in 2,000 and some expense lines. They're all in Tyler right now, and we have a test screen that we can look at them. We also have provided accounts payable training to some of the departments. It was a demo that was put on. We had 11 department heads and users in attendance last Wednesday and 14 in attendance last Thursday. And the departments are really receiving it well, what they've seen of the accounts payable piece. It's really user-friendly, and I think that people are gonna adapt real well to it. So, what are you guys gonna be seeing? Karen, can you open number three? This is what the payable register is gonna look like. Currently, you get an email around, what, Thursday or Friday, with all the expenditures for you to approve on today's board date. In Tyler world, I envision a report like this. This is called the payable register. Every department's gonna enter their claims, and when they're finished entering their And when they're finished entering their claims, the department head or the authorized individual is going to review this report. Your report is going to be a little bit longer, but that's just because you can see that it's just a little bit more separated and cleaner looking than in HTE where we just have a few lines that show certain things. You're going to see up here, we have a description of toner, so this was office equipment. There's another description down here of toner. So if we have more than one expense to the same vendor, we can have different descriptions for different items within the same vendor. So you're getting the same information here, it's just a little cleaner working. All of the reports pull with our logo on it, which is kind of nice. And if you're in Tyler, which I'm not opposed to giving the board inquiry rights to go into these and work within these. All of these blue underlined items, you can click on these and it actually takes you to the invoice and you can pull the invoice up and look at the invoice.
You said that each vendor will just be repeated, or it won't be repeated. It'll just be once per claim process?
Yes, but it'll be different departments. So at the end, when we merge them all together, there would be one check written to the vendor. But if you have several different departments submitting them, you might see them in different spots on the different reports here. So what I actually did here is I spent a little bit of time today actually entering the claims that you're approving today. So this is actually the auditor's claim that you approved today in the consent agenda. And then at the end here, you have a total. So I compared this total with what was in HTE. And this was a good test because, I mean, we're just new in test mode on this this week. And it just proved to me that our vendors carried in correctly. Our expenditure lines conversion worked right. I was able to look at our cheat sheet to cross-reference the old account to the new account. Because if you look at this, you're going to see the new expenditure lines on here. So here's the expenditure line right here. 1,500 is 360, so this is a capital improvements expense right here. For Tyler, what do you know? So it's working, so far it's working. So it's a good thing. And then Karen, if you want to open up number, let me see what the numbers say. Number five. So I actually printed this one out for you. This is the publication report that Tyler produces. And this is up on the screen is the old publication report. So if you guys have time to redo this, just give me any input if it's missing something or if there's something that you think we should be including in our publications. The difference that you'll see here is the middle column on the old report is actually the expense line description. It's not the specific description that the department enters into the claim. In Tyler, the description that's on their report is actually the description, the more itemized, specific description that the department entered. So you'll see on that report, it says toner instead of office supplies. So you're going to see a little bit of variations there.
This is what goes to the newspapers?
Yes, yes.
So it's a little improvement over what you once asked for, Matt.
It's what?
It's a little improvement over what you once asked for.
Yes, it is. I'd asked for more detail on the claims and for that to be publicly available.
And there's room for more detail than that. I mean, that's the detail that the departments are putting in now. That's, I just copied it straight from what they put in HTE. So that's actually, that Tyler report is showing what the individuals had put into HTE. So I do want to give a really, really special thanks to the IT department because they've really been phenomenal through this whole process. There's been a lot involved with them setting up new servers, working with us. When we had the contractor or the individual here from Tyler last week, we had some issues with them having access to the server. Rightly so, because they have security in place that we don't just let vendors get on the servers. Because, you know, you just don't want them hopping on and off as needed. So the IT department was able to work with us, work with Tyler, and get Tyler what they needed while we were able to respect the security policies that we have in place. So Doug and Doug Bach and Bob Hind have really stepped up. They've been coming to all the meetings. They've really been there whenever we need something. They've been going above and beyond to help us out. One of the things that we're assessing just in the last week is desktop scanners. This is something that we did not include in our original assessment of what would be needed. We're changing the process of how the departments submit their claims to an electronic process. So we're asking the departments to actually scan their invoices in instead of bringing them in paper to our office. And so I'm assessing which users actually have a desktop scanner and the primary user of the AP claims enter. Because it's going to save us time in the auditor's office for them to enter those. Plus, it's going to save a lot of paper of everybody not printing everything out. So I've assessed that according to Tyler's standards, we might need about 20 desktop scanners. Prices range from like 200 to 1,000 and something. So I'm asking IT to kind of look at the list and give me their top three selection of what they think would be the best ones for us to get for this project.
One of the things, the reason we're doing that is that we were at ISAC and we were talking with other county auditor's offices about how they do things. And we have Michelle, who does accounts payable, and one clerk. A lot of those offices have many more people there because what they do is they don't allow their departments to enter the claims. And they all have to bring it to us, we have to do it. What we're hoping and what we've experienced by what we've done before is that those folks are the ones that are entering the claims. They actually know what's going on and putting on the correct line items and that sort of thing, trying to reduce the number of adjustments that Dennis has to do. And we're, I was pretty pleased with those conversations that we're pretty efficient when it comes to doing accounts payable and payroll and would-be accounting.
Yes, it worked well.
Thank Michelle for that.
Also, we're going to have a need potentially for receipt printers. And that would be for the treasurer's office and district health, who are receiving the income, receiving the cash. They have receipt printers that are not listed as being supported and compatible with the Tyler project. And so I'm assessing the cost of those. There would be three of those that will be a need. I'm thinking 15,000 to 20,000 or so if we were to be able to get these for all of the departments. There's a potential that some of the scanners and some of the devices they have will work, but Tyler will not say, yeah, they're going to work. They're not on their list, they're not supported, but we can give them a go and see if they're going to work. It's kind of like that, so.
Do we have that within that budget or, you know, I think that's something we expected.
Right. I'm hoping that we'll be a little under budget, so maybe we would be able to pull it from that, but we did not budget for those items. So...
Mark is reviewing his current CIPs for his current year, see if there's any money left over. The other option is after July 1st, we blew in our CIP for next year, we borrowed in the following May. I mean, I'm sorry, Ken, Kenny Smith.
They're about the same height.
Thanks, Mark.
Just lost the bridge.
So what do we have in the future? Budgets will be available on Tyler in late April or early May for us to review. And I think you're really going to like the way it looks. You can bring up pie charts. You can, there's just a lot of functionality and things that you can see and things that you can do with, work with, working with this. It's Excel, it's got an Excel look. You can export to PDF, you can export to Excel. And if you open it within the Tyler program, there's those little blue links are all over the place that you can link to different things all over the place.
Will it cut down on physical paper?
Yes.
Quite a bit?
Yes. Just the claims alone, I mean, we have a packet like this, just full of papers that the department, ask Mark what he brings in. And the signature process of them signing off on every invoice. We're going to go electronic, so I'm researching a way that they can do an electronic password-protected signature that has the time and date that they'll stamp the last page of that claim that we submit to you. So all of that is going to be emailed to us. So all the paper will be cut down on that part. And then hopefully payroll also. So we'll be configuring payroll in two weeks, which means that we're going to be adding all of the payroll codes and making sure that everything carries in properly so that everybody gets paid accordingly. Did you have a question?
Nope.
And then we also have the aspect of the recorder is converting all the recorder software. They've already configured all that software in Diane's office. They've been working live on, well, not live, they've been working in VITAL. So they've actually been doing duplicate entry just on their own. It's not a requirement, but her clerks are entering in their current software solutions and in Tyler. And they're balancing, so everything's going really well in preparing. The recorder's going to be live on June 10th. That's when their system is going to be live and when they record things, it's actually going to be in the new Tyler. Finance will be going live July 15th, so we'll hopefully be able to get through year-end in HTE. And then we'll start in Tyler on July 15th. So everything from July 1st through the 15th will be in Tyler, we'll update it for that. And then tax is going live on July 22nd, a week after finance. And we'll actually be rolling the new tax statements out of the new software. And that is my review.
I just want to say thank you to Michelle because I went through this about 20 years ago and it seemed much more chaotic than what we had to do. We had consultants, we had two consultants running around here during that whole entire period of time. And it seemed like it was a much larger effort. What we did this time was we brought a consultant in to do the evaluation. And after a meeting with Michelle and seeing what we were going to do, he didn't think we would need a consultant. And I was nervous about that, but Michelle has stepped up to the plate. And Dennis has been very cooperative, worked very hard with her to get everything accomplished. And it's very, it's been very smooth and it's been an efficient process. And not having consultants around here saves us lots of money. So we're very appreciative of what she's done.
It's a tremendous improvement for what we got. Not saying what we have is bad, but this is tremendous.
But it was.
You know, I didn't even picture, you know, we used to have big budget books. I can picture that pulled right up on your laptops instead of having these big budget books. You know, something to think about.
And when you, when you, Dennis, upload approved budgets to the website, it used to take the form of just a snapshot file, almost like a summary. But now the public will be able to dive into links and...
Maybe even change numbers?
Well...
Just view only. But it'll be a tremendous improvement.
Yes.
It's exciting.
It is. Thank goodness that our people here are accepting it. I haven't heard anybody really knock.
Well, I don't know anyone that says, when I go to Dennis, I want to report that size eight font with a bunch of zeros.
Right.
So it'll help, just day-to-day.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. It's hard to follow up a discussion on computer software, but move on to the reports on committee meetings there, Jeremy.
Several of them, Mr. Churchill, had a good celebration of the Reserve's graduation, made 14 of them and 427 hours that they've given since January 1st. Anything from community placing, school resource, and just tremendous, every Thursday night for about a year. In addition to many other hours, just to be able to volunteer and create up there. And then a couple of other ones, so LEC expansion committee, Matthew and I attended. And going forward, and not to rehash the whole issue because you know fairly well with that 1987 law enforcement building that has air handlers that need to be replaced. There's a tremendous cost there versus the potential of perhaps building new and having capacity to generate revenue in order to be able to do so. So we're going to look at that issue. We have put together a working group and are reaching out to stakeholders in the community to include business leaders, the TRC, rural mayors, one or two other city councils, some media. In order to really do this in a two-part process. One is to vet, or to learn informationally first of all. Just what our corporate group architect, our jail consultant, has looked at, has some of the needs and issues. And then toured the current facility. And then perhaps a couple, three weeks later, to then look for 60 to 90 minutes of their recommendation maybe. But there's some things to deal with.
No, you covered it.
The other one is we had a Rolling Hills meeting over in Holstein. Thankfully, they're moving a little closer to our direction. And so with that, the real, there were a lot of things that were covered, but the big one you've already approved. And that was the authorization of the positions of yesteryear. And three is the number of FDEs that we're looking at as of July 1st, we'll prove those tonight. A coordinator, coordinator slash support staff, because we're accounting this large, it's actually larger than the others that we put together. And a mental health advocate, which is something that by code we have to hire, but we'll do so at their recommendation. Couple other quick things on that. We will host this in accordance with our practices. I thought Paul Merns from BD did a very nice job of assuring the staff that they're very valued. They're not only expected, but encouraged to apply in this. And so we're going to try to make that transition smooth. And we'll look to hire in May, they will actually look to hire in May, and we'll coordinate on the advocate position. Marty had brought up earlier on the meeting about benefits. We will be the employer of record. And my expectation would be that benefits, I mean, these aren't new employees that are starting over vacation or otherwise. If they are to, it may be that the hires. So that's kind of the long and short of it. We also did talk about, what do I? I was asked if Mikey, who currently works over there, it would be okay to transfer to building services. And so that may be an item that you see coming back shortly. I think that's pretty much it. Any questions?
On the Reserve graduation deal, in the future, could we get like invites to the board? Is that?
Next year?
Yeah. I think it'd be neat to go and... I don't know, I didn't get one.
It was supposed to be set out to the board.
Okay.
Sure.
On the jail, does anyone else have anything on that? On the jail meeting, somebody to include, there was a previous jail report. I think Skip Purley was the one that was in charge of that. Obviously, things have changed since that report. One being condition of the facilities. And two, implementing a lot of the things that were in that report has been done. But yet we still have a need, you know, there's still a capacity issue even after all those implementations. So I think it would be important to let those stakeholders know that we're in on this previous report that, hey, yeah, the condition of the ground has changed here, so. Also, Karen had sent me a deal requesting from the Samuels Group about planning, construction management, and pre-bond services. Was this discussed at all? Samuels Group? Do we know where that, or they were just trying to maybe get a foot in the door, or is that? You guys know anything? Yeah. Samuels Group? Okay. All right, that was a question I had. So they asked to be on our agenda, but I hadn't heard anything from them, of them, anything, so.
Well, we get a lot of requests, just general media that tips companies off and...
Sure. All right, so that's all my questions on that. Anyone else have anything for Jeremy? All right, Matthew?
So just curious, Sheriff, we added 14, what are we up to now?
24, 25. It would be 25 if we're ready.
Okay.
Active.
Yep.
Also, the SYNCOS Housing Trust Fund Committee had set up a special meeting this week to address and perhaps reprogram funds to assist flooding victims. Since then, the SYNCOS has been awarded the Federal Home Loan Bank grant of $550,000, which will be on the agenda this week to disperse, or at least plan to disperse. We have that coming online, it's probably available in May around that time, so. Some more good news from the last report on the Housing Trust Fund.
SYNCOS in a grant competition right now, it seems like.
With itself.
That's right. Rocky, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Marty?
No, sir.
They had a Regional Workforce Development Board meeting, David was there, he thought it was riveting. The discussion on the new Regional Workforce Development Board regions, this is a little different from mental health regions, the state just kinda dictates your region. So we're going from like five counties to 28, I believe? So we're gonna be a little bigger region. We're hoping to keep most of our board members and keep the meetings here. And that was the only thing I had. Any questions for anybody on any of the committee meetings? Moving on to citizen concerns, and group board concerns, Jeremy?
I think we got a couple. First one, assessments, I'm sure that's a topic that has been probably in your emails and voicemails as of late, so I'm just encouraging the public to appeal as they see necessary and understand that, that process with the board review. Also, passing along to the Tax Affairs Research Conference, handouts from a year ago's conference board meeting, throw some notes there on the impetus, and of course, reemphasizing that the public, that's a position that law and advocate, city council, and county combined, and I think that's, we're continually keep an eye on. Second concern, I think it'd be helpful to have a legislative session with our board and our counterparts, even if it was something like, you know, it's last minute, but Saturday for 45 minutes or an hour, and bring donuts and coffee, and just to talk about, maybe you give them a little 10 minutes on, here's some of the cooperative efforts or outreach, you know, what Woodbury County has going on, but then talk about mental health funding, Mark's bridge issue, property tax reform, just think face to face helps a lot.
So you're talking with state officials there?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking in particular, our two state senators and our house reps.
House reps.
And just have, you know, I know we'd have to post it, but it just seems like...
Well, the city does that annually.
But with these things looming, either the, the bridge issue, I'm very concerned about the $12.9 million in property taxes for mental health over the next two years that are coming. Just to have a dialogue, I don't know if anybody has appetite for doing something like that.
We're kinda late on this year, though, I mean, unless you're thinking they're, you know, maybe the swing of vote or something.
I mean, we're still in session, and they can still either advocate, I'm thinking out of mental health funding, the policy stuff.
That's why you're thinking of Saturday, 'cause they'd be home for the weekend.
Right, right, and to at least say, if there's no funding attached, you know...
Unfunded mandate.
Right. Or to just get some more perspective, to me, I think it's more powerful than, the resolution's great, but to also be able to hear from Mark through your eyes, just a thought.
Well, they all have scheduled events on Saturdays, don't they? Do you know that it's available this Saturday for both of the state senators?
I don't, but I would think so.
Oh, we won't be able to schedule this Saturday, I mean, you'd have to, more notice than that, so...
I would think to, there'd be a little bit more notice given, but, I mean, it's a good idea, the city does it, and the county should do it at least once every legislative session.
In the future, maybe we'd do them in December?
Would anybody ever learn if I asked the question and saw if they had any?
Go ahead.
Forty-five minutes to an hour?
That won't be available, but I don't have a problem with it.
Worst they can say is no.
I'm the one with the four.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Marty? Yeah, I, I got a question on an event coming up, I believe it's this weekend for the Arts Center. Are we gonna be manning our security posts all the time there at this building?
For the... You mean Symphony?
Symphony, I'm sorry, Symphony, yeah.
We have to, we have to...
But I mean, we'll work it just like we do anything else, we'll go through the scanners and bring this stuff through? We're not gonna...
I really don't wanna get into that, but there's, I mean, you want, I got...
Do, do we...
I don't wanna get discouraged.
I don't get in...
We're talking about the...
I, I'm more curious, what'd we do on Veterans Day?
No, we didn't.
We didn't run them through it?
The reason, the reason that I, I don't see any purpose is that courts aren't here and the employees aren't here. So to have people in Congress wait to get through, I, I did the Veterans Day and I said, no, we have adoption day and we do it because the courts are here. But if it's a special event like that, there's really, I, I see no purpose. I have two security, if there's all of a sudden a gunfight, I have two armed people, so...
When we had the centennial event, we had them go through security.
I don't know about your centennial event.
That was during business hours.
Yes, during business hours, after business hours.
No, it was not, it was on a Saturday.
Oh, it was, okay.
I, I, I just don't see the point. I know some have, have concerns, but Sheriff's perspective, there is no reason to.
First I learned of it was a voicemail from Jim Jung, said he wanted to be here, and was very strongly against it because consistency of past practice, I guess, and the fact that he would be a veteran going through a scanner and someone else wouldn't. Are we, I don't, I guess I don't like getting into it either, but we are, so is there gonna be that split? Are you...
I, I guess how I'm gonna look at it is, when the courthouse is open for business, it will be business as usual. When it's a special event like Saturday and I have two people working it, we're not paying overtime out of our pocket, they're paying to have that event open. I see no purpose, a threat to the courts or the employees. We'll have people there, if you're worried about, someone could hide a gun, they could hide a gun anytime, so.
And you're saying this is the same practices for Veterans Day?
Yeah, Veterans Day, you were, we didn't, the reason...
Well, that was the one Veterans Day, not in the past.
Well, I mean, did I have to have an effective date to tell you? I don't think so. It's just, I don't see the point. I was gonna say something. We need court security there for the wheelchair ramp, because none of us are smart enough to know how to operate it, and those that do it all the time. On Veterans Day, it was a cluster. Todd and I didn't know how to operate it, people were backed up, I'm not gonna have 80 and 90-year-old veterans standing out trying to get in, so I wasn't worried. And I'm not worried about the Symphony. But now that we've discussed it, I guess it's a little different. But anyway, I have people here that will be, one sworn and, and one courthouse security person, so it'll be a good change.
My personal opinion, you know, you're, you're the guy in charge of it, you know, and this discussion might be better in you guys' security meetings, as far as like coming up with the procedure. My personal preference, treat everyone the same as much as you can.
Sure.
You know, I mean, there, we can't have, you know, somebody thinking their group's better than another group or anything.
No, no group's better than another.
And, and, and we don't want anyone from the past saying, well, you know, we were discriminated against because of where this group is, so...
So what we'll do is, effective April 2, 2019, if it's after courthouse hours, we'll have the proper security here, we're not gonna use it, I don't care if it was the Mormon choir coming in, I just don't see the point of, of having that done, there's no employees here, there's, the courts aren't here, and so it's, it's not an issue, we have people that will be working it that are, it's no different, though, than if they went to another event, that it was a county-owned building, so...
The only difference is we don't have security there.
Right, yeah. There is a little bit of difference here, they're gonna be running a full bar in here, not just wine, they're running a full bar in here, it's a party at the courthouse after hours.
But you, that you still have, you still have two security guys, though, right?
Yeah. There's our security guys there.
There's still two guys there.
And then who's responsible? They're dancing around and stuff, they scrape apart floor, they damage property, are they liable?
The scanner wouldn't stop any of that, though.
No, this, they have this whole...
Have it, we approved the party, so...
Right. You approved it without knowing the full context of a full bar running in here, running 11 o'clock at night, 11:30 at night. Personally, Pat Gill is in charge of the courthouse. There, first Pat.
I thought you were gonna say he's in charge of the bar, but...
Subject to the discussion after board is...
Well, my, my, my only concern was with just doing it the same all the time, 'cause I can go back to when this first started, when we had civilians up there, I happen to remember that. One of our board members at the time would not go through security, and one of the judges says, you might as well throw it all out there, 'cause if you have some security, you don't have security. And I, I took that to heart, that everybody goes through or nobody goes through.
It sounds like nobody's going through Saturday. At least it's consistent.
Oh, well, I don't know, if you guys, I think if we want more discussion on that, it's proper in the security committee meetings, but, I mean, he ultimately decides as the guy securing the building, we don't have anything on the agenda to vote on.
I just think it sends the wrong message.
What does?
I said, I just believe it sends the wrong message, where one group gets singled out because they're special, and it's still our building.
That, that was a problem. Somebody came to the board office and they said, we are the elite, we don't need security. Okay, what about everybody else then? Are we not elite enough to have no security in the courthouse?
What group said that?
An individual, I give you a name, I really don't wanna get a name. That was said to Heather, she verified, Karen heard. Those are all kind of comments, because if that gets out, people say, well then, are we second-class? What are we? That was a wrong comment to make to our staff in the office, 'cause then right away, he said, oh, we'll talk to Sheriff. And next thing you know, there is no security.
No, there's, there's security, there's just no scanning.
No scanner, nobody's security, nobody's talking to anybody. Okay, he said he was gonna go, Heather said he was gonna go and talk to you. Stuff like that doesn't even be said, we do pick it up. Everyone wonder, okay, there's, there's like, special groups, groups getting special treatment. I thought we're all late.
Anything else? Rocky, anything else? Hornick event the other night with FEMA, David was there and his staff. Incredible to see, you know, how their, you know, residents and their concern. Did wanna, you know, thank Tyson and Salvation Army, it's two groups that are donating a lot of time and food. Pretty impressive to see the applause for the Salvation Army when they got up, it's very much appreciated. And I think when the, when everything clears up, I think, you know, some kind of certification from us, congratulations would be in order. I know they don't do it for that, but it's just good to get that out in the, in the news media that they're doing such a great job. So I brought up the Samuels Group deal, no one's heard of. The other thing was from HR, if our emergency services is gonna be a fire department assistance, they're gonna need to get firefighter, physicals, respiratory protection program, and personal protective equipment and turnout gear. So that's something for us to consider, if that's gonna...
They don't have those things right now?
No. According to the report from, I'd have to check the email who it was.
They should have private time. Yeah. They have the section on the top, too.
Yeah.
That's gotta go up.
Did they give a number or not?
I don't know, Melissa got the add or not. But there is additional costs, and we're gonna keep extending our emergency service to more and more emergency services, where do we stop?
Well, did we, as a board, ever give authorization to have emergency services become fire protection?
Not that one, where?
Well, that should be probably found out, I think.
Well, I heard it at the meeting, was the first I'd heard of, I just figured that it happened before my term on here, but, 'cause I, I didn't know we had it.
I don't remember that being approved.
Oh, we'll have to look at the costs involved and then determine if that is something we wanna...
You might not know something you're aware of, but they, they've always done it, and they got a Humper truck donated to CFO Industries or something like that, and they have stuff that...
Okay.
I think they just fielded the fire protection, I think, my system, I never know.
They don't do any fire suppression?
No, they don't.
No, they don't go out and destroy it.
Right.
They just have, they go out and help them, put out grass, with a slap.
Well, then, we're gonna have to...
Fire swatter.
Those aren't easy to use, by the way.
And they, and they did, here's the tractor, holds the outside facility that was in danger, being burned out because of the grass.
Okay.
I've heard all of it.
Well, then, we're gonna...
You were ahead of me, 'cause I hadn't heard any of it till the other day at the meeting.
We need to get clarification before we get ding the workers.
Did you know we have...
No, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I just...
I saw everybody kinda looking, like, what?
Cut me off guard.
All right, so, who, who's taken the leading role on determining that? Are we gonna put that, Gary behind that, or...
Your HR department's risk assessment would be taking that out. Reciprocating a conversation between that department and the board is...
Sounds great. Melissa from Des Moines, can you hear that? All right. Anything else for the good of the cause?
I don't know, on the mental health bill that's being passed, that we do have an option, 30 days if it's passed for juvenile care and other core services and balances, that we can amend our certification to increase that, 'cause now we've heard another number from Sioux Rivers, which is less than what we anticipated. Again, that's another individual gives a lower number, we may be $100,000 short, so we may have to recertify our budget and raise it, and then if his number is wrong, we come back in June to drop it back again, but we gotta protect ourselves, 'cause we don't have $100,000 laying around for mental health, because of shortfall in the ending balances.
Take it from D.
So we do have that option after the bill's passed, 30 days to recertify. Then if we do increase it, say a penny or two would make up the $100,000, we can come back in June, if the balances look like they're gonna be, or we thought they're gonna be better, and we reduce our tax rates then.
Maybe we can figure out like a media credential pass during the Tibbetts deal coming up, you know?
Well, that's...
By $50 per media pass? Sound good?
Lot of it, lot of it.
All right, sounds good. All right, with that, we're adjourned.